Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 8th meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Today's meeting will include a policy meeting as well as a formal convening of the Phoenix City Council to address some issues with labor and contract negotiations. So we will convene first in the policy session. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
We will begin today with council information and follow-up requests. This is an opportunity for council members to provide updates as well as to ask staff for information. We will begin with Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take a moment to personally and publicly thank Dr. Jesse Wash. Until yesterday, he was the superintendent of the Paradise Valley Unified School District, one of the largest districts in the state and in our city. My children were educated in the PV district, and many fine teachers helped my children become the productive adults they are today. Dr. Wash is a great guy. But after enduring threats and harassment regarding decisions he made due to the pandemic, he decided to resign. And it wasn't just him being harassed. It was his family, which included his children. Dr. Wash was responsible for the education of children living in his school district. However, just as important, he was responsible for the health of his students, teachers, and parents, especially under COVID-19. And I want to thank him for taking on that responsibility. He has tried to do it thoughtfully and sincerely. What he has gone through is unacceptable. We need to be civil and understand he was doing what he thought was best for the school district. He based his decisions on data and advice of medical professions. I applaud him for caring about the health and well-being of all those who live in the Paradise Valley Unified School District, which includes me. I will miss him, and I wish he would reconsider. But I do understand his decision. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. A powerful call for civility and recognition for someone who does truly care about our students. It has been a concerning time in our community. There have been threats against public health professionals, our educators, our volunteer school board members. We've also seen threats against our statewide elected officials. These threats of physical violence and intimidation are just not acceptable. I appreciate your call for civility and want to echo it myself. May 2021 be a year in which we work out disputes by talking about public policy and values and not through threats. Vice Mayor will recognize you next.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. So I am excited to announce just a little bit of light in these very difficult times that we're in right now. I wanted to announce that the gated alley pilot program has been a great success for our District 5 neighborhoods. By the end of this month, three alley segments are scheduled to be gated in three different neighborhoods. One in Maryvale, one in Ocatillo Glen, and one in Washington Park. So many great leaders stepped up to talk to their neighbors in these difficult times. I know that it was not easy for them to sometimes maybe go door-to-door, talk to their neighbors, given that we're in the middle of this pandemic. But they went out there, spoke to their neighbors, and got the signatures that we needed to approve this program. We're excited to continue to involve these neighbors in the cleanup and maintenance of the alleys. There are still a dozen additional alley segments in the process, and we're looking forward to the next round of gated alleys scoring. Thanks again to the cooperation of multiple city departments, including Alan Stevenson and his team at Planning and Development, Spencer Self and the folks of Neighborhood Services, and Ginger Spencer and everyone else in Public Works. So thank you so much, everyone, for all the great work. I know that this is something that's going to be really, really great for our neighborhoods. So once again, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I also want to start with a bit of good news. On Friday, the city received word that the U.S. Department of Transportation had recommended more than $500 million in funding for the South Central Light Rail Extension and the downtown hub. This project is already moving forward. But it is so welcome to have this support from our federal government, and we are really excited. It will be a great employer during construction and then a great connector of our families and neighborhoods once it is operating. So some good news to begin our December. Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give you some policy updates. This past Saturday, I was happy to pack up 800 food boxes with Urban Farming. I will be partnering with them to expand the food distribution in District 4 for those who need it during this difficult time. I'm also excited to announce a toy drive taking place to give back to families and students in the Isaac School District. On January 6th at 3:00 p.m., families can come to Heart of Isaac Community Center and pick up one toy per child. This event is for Dia de los Reyes Magos or Day of the Three Kings and is being hosted by the New Colors Project. Please consider taking some time to drop off or mail in a toy. On December 15th, I will be having my last virtual coffee talk of 2020. Woo-hoo! Finally, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to my two interns, Andy and Scotty, who have birthdays this month. So if you go onto my website, you will see how you can help us donate toys and make people smile. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional council updates? All right. We will next go to our agendized items, which include an opportunity for public comment. So I will turn to our city attorney to talk about public comment.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. Public comment is allowed on items that are on the agenda. The public has two minutes to address the council on the item on the agenda. They need to confine the comments to the agenda item. Any comments that not relate to that are not appropriate at that time. And we have always asked that the comments remain civil and that we not attack any members of the council or staff or other members of the public or people that are present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to our city attorney. We do not have any budget updates today, so we will begin with our agenda item number one, the Fast Track Cities Initiative. We will be hearing a four-year update of our Fast Track Cities Ad-Hoc Committee. I want to thank the ad hoc committee members who are here with us today for your creativity and dedication to long-lasting solutions for our residents living with HIV. You've been a credit to our community and have helped us receive both national and international recognition. Thank you to Councilwoman Stark and Councilwoman Pastor for co-chairing this important committee. It was created by then-Mayor Greg Stanton with Councilmember Daniel Valenzuela as one of the original co-chairs. And we appreciate their leadership as well. It's really exciting to reflect on all we have accomplished in these four years. And I will turn it over to our Human Services Director, Michelle Franklin, to introduce this item.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Gallego and members of the city council. We are here to provide you with a four-year update on the Fast Track Cities Initiative. Joining me at the table to present this afternoon is Sergio Gomez, who serves as our Strategic Initiatives Manager in our Human Services Department. David Martinez III, who serves as Director for Capacity Building and Community Engagement with Vitalist Health. And he also serves as Chair of the Fast Track Cities Virally Suppressed Subcommittee. Also joining us is Dr. Tennis Vanek, Medical Director at Spectrum Medical, and he is a Fast Track Cities Ad-Hoc Committee Member. Kenja Hassan, Assistant Vice President, Office of Government and Community Engagement with Arizona State University, who also serves as a Fast Track Cities Ad-Hoc Committee Member. And rounding out our presentation will be Glenn Spencer, who is the Executive Director of Aunt Rita's Foundation and is the Chair of the Know Your Status and Eliminate Stigma Subcommittee. And with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Sergio. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this update to you. As an overview, I'd like to let you know that the Fast Track Cities Initiative is a global partnership between the City of Paris and Joint United Nations Programs on HIV/AIDS in collaboration with local, national, regional, and international partners and stakeholders. There are currently 25 Fast Track Cities in the United States working toward ending HIV as a public health threat by 2030 by building upon, strengthening, and leveraging exciting HIV-related programs and resources. As mentioned, in October of 2016, the mayor and city council authorized the city of Phoenix to join the Fast Track Cities Initiative. We are thankfully co-chaired by Councilwoman Laura Pastor and Councilwoman Deborah Stark, and we have a great diverse 20-member ad hoc committee representing people living with HIV, medical providers, community-based organizations, local HIV advocacy groups, and government departments in the HIV field. This committee has done great work and has progressed towards the benchmarks on prevention and treatment of the referred goals as 90, 90, 90, 0. What these goals are is 90% of people living with HIV know their status. Those 90% who know their HIV-positive status are on antiretroviral therapy, better known as ART, which will be discussed in more detail in this presentation. And 90% on ART achieve viral suppression. The 0 is that we are able to end stigma and discrimination. In reaching these goals, we have three subcommittees that were created: the Virally Suppressed Subcommittee, the Know Your Status Subcommittee, and the Eliminate Stigma Subcommittee. And as mentioned, this committee has done great work in collaborating and doing what is needed to help us achieve these resources and goals. And so with that, I would like, and I'm excited to have our esteemed ad hoc committee members here to present these updates. So with that, I would like to present Mr. David Martinez III, our Virally Suppressed Subcommittee Chair.
Thank you, Sergio, and thank you, Mayor and council, for the time to provide these progress updates on the Fast Track Cities Initiative. We know your docket is full, especially with COVID-19 response. And while we recognize the importance and honor those lives impacted because of COVID, we also want to let you know that the fight against HIV/AIDS pandemic continues. It was in 1981, almost 40 years ago, when the CDC recognized the first cases that would become known as AIDS. A lot of progress has been made since then in this effort. But Maricopa County still remains a hotspot for new HIV diagnoses in the country. Last year, as you'll see in this slide, nearly 14,000 people live with HIV reside in our communities, including more than 600 new cases. Those are new lives impacted by HIV. On the next slide, you'll see, though, with your support of the Fast Track Cities Initiative and of the incredible team on the ad hoc committee and those direct service providers, we're seeing improvements towards our 90, 90, 90 goal. We're testing more and see a slight uptick in people knowing their status from 85% in 2015 to 86% last year. And just as importantly is a tremendous progress that has been made to ensure those new diagnoses not only go into treatment, up 9% to 60%, but stay in treatment and are virally suppressed, so further transmission is nearly impossible. That's up 15% to 65%. On the next slide, you'll see that the progress is in large part to the Fast Track Initiative's focus on increasing medical provider knowledge of HIV care and supportive services, so people living with HIV can navigate systems, are tested, and go into and remain in treatment. We do that through the educational brochures created and distributed at several outreach events. And the test-and-treat model is working, which Dr. Vanek will review in just a moment. That has increased our focus on engagement and retention in care with local and state partners like the Arizona Department of Health Services. Thank you so much for your support.
I'm presenting an update on the City of Phoenix Rapid Start Program, which the acronym is START. The U = U Campaign is a global health equity initiative to end HIV and HIV-related stigma by empowering people with and vulnerable to HIV with information about their social, sexual, and reproductive health. The U = U Campaign highlights that a person living on HIV, with HIV on antiretroviral therapy, with undetectable viral load for at least six months, cannot transmit virus through sexual contact. The goal of Rapid Start is to start newly diagnosed HIV person on ART as soon as possible. Rapid Start is currently recommended by all treatment guidelines for the U.S. and all across the world. This is the preliminary result of our START program in Maricopa County that was launched in September of 2018. We significantly reduced time from diagnosis to linkage to care from 30 days in 2018 to six days as of July of this year. We also significantly reduced time of HIV diagnosis to viral suppression from 129 days in 2018 to 37 days as of July of this year. At the Fast Track Cities 2019 Conference in London, the City of Phoenix delivered two presentations. The first one was an oral presentation on the results of our START program. And the second one was a poster presentation on implementation strategies of START program. We have submitted two abstracts to the next Fast Track Cities Conference in Lisbon. Now, I would like to turn over the presentation to Kenja Hassan, who will provide you an update on our Know Your Status and Eliminate Stigma subcommittees.
Thank you all for allowing me to present. I want to reiterate what Dr. Vanek said about the time to treat and the time to be coming virally suppressed. Those are really remarkable numbers that speak to a dramatic change that would not have happened without your support. So the Know Your Status and Eliminate Stigma subcommittees have been busy working together to understand what's happening with stigma and perceptions about HIV in our community. Because it's really when we eliminate stigma and when we really understand how people understand HIV in our community that we'll be able to eradicate this virus. To tackle this challenge, we partnered with Arizona Department of Health Services to do a needs assessment focused on African-American and Hispanic communities, mostly on Hispanic men, African-American men, and women, because all of these groups are at a disproportionate risk of contracting HIV and face higher morbidity rates. Final executive summaries of these reports are available on the Fast Track Cities website. Now, both of these reports reinforce the need to include faith communities in tackling HIV-related stigma. So we worked with Councilwoman Pastor to send a letter to faith leaders across Phoenix encouraging them to be aware of the challenges that emerge from HIV-related stigma and alerting them to a toolkit, which we created and placed on the Fast Track Cities website. This toolkit provides resources like sermons and other recommendations from faith leaders across the country on how to talk about this virus inside your congregation. ISU's Southwest Interdisciplinary Research Center was commissioned by V Pharmaceuticals to help create a marketing campaign surrounding the concept of U = U. U = U is a concept that when a person is undetectable, they can no longer transmit the virus, which a lot of people don't realize when they become HIV-positive or when they think about people who are living with HIV. From the outreach to faith communities, we invited faith leaders to join the statewide HIV symposium and to attend a panel discussion on faith leaders and how to talk about stigma within their congregations. From that, and this picture is pre-COVID, it's from 2019, from that came a partnership with five pastors affiliated with the Arizona African-American Christian Clergy Association. They all agreed to give sermons on the same day and invited mobile testing units to their churches, and they were all the first in line to get tested. We made available training modules for the City of Phoenix employees and the general public so that people can become better acquainted with how HIV is transmitted and how it works in the body. Our most recent project is this quantitative survey, the 2019 People Living with HIV Survey, which I'll tell you about. The previous qualitative work helped us understand that HIV stigma is still a challenge and that we needed to dig deeper. Now, we define stigma for this report as prejudice or abuse and negative attitudes directed at people living with HIV, but also those who are perceived to be at high risk of contracting HIV. And why did we know this was important? Because we heard stories. There was a story about a Latina who was interviewed on Spanish-language TV about the history of HIV, because she was HIV-positive, and she promptly had her property vandalized by neighbors, even though the station made effort to protect her identity. There was a couple who was threatened by their neighbors to go to the HOA when a neighbor found out that both members of the couple were HIV-positive. A mom wanted to have another child, but her OB-GYN warned against it. Even though properly cared-for pregnant women can deliver a baby that is free of HIV 99% of the time. So, and an African-American woman who is popular in her church, afraid to be seen walking into the Parsons Health Clinic because someone might recognize her. So about 300 people participated in the survey, and they ranged in age from 18 to 77. Half of these participants reported an annual income of less than $25,000. And about half of them experienced significant stigma. What we learned is that social isolation is really a concern. Disclosing HIV status is still a concern because 70% of them are afraid of discrimination. And very few know, I mean, there's about 30% who don't know about U = U. Now, the good news to come from this survey is that the half who do know about U = U are very confident in it and what it means. And the people living with HIV who rate their health as good or excellent had lower stigma scores in everything. They felt better about themselves personally. They had less fear of other people and they had of disclosing to other people. And they had less fear of experiencing stigma in the public. So our takeaways from all of this work is that stigma is still an issue for all groups, but especially minorities. And religious views are still a challenge. On the other hand, we know that there, oh, gosh, there is still a sense of shame for people who are not HIV-positive about the possibility of being diagnosed with HIV. And that results in people being afraid to test regularly. But again, people who are living with HIV, who are in good health, feel less stigma all around, and that is really good news for providers. If we can get people with living with HIV feeling healthy, stigma begins to fade. So thanks to all of you for making all of this work possible. I hope you recognize how tremendous the numbers are that Dr. Vanek read earlier. And thank you for supporting our efforts so far. Glenn, I'll turn it over to you.
Initiative, sorry about that. Let me just express my gratitude on behalf of the entire Fast Track Cities Ad-Hoc Committee to Mayor Gallego and the council members for supporting this initiative. All of us have been working diligently in this field for quite some time. And so to have your partnership in this means the world to us. In your packets is a declaration that we are hoping to get adoption of by the council today. This declaration has been unanimously supported by every member of the ad hoc committee. And I might add that all of the provisions called for in this declaration are ones that are also supported by the CDC and its efforts to end the HIV epidemic. To characterize this declaration, it really calls on three initiatives. One relates to testing, one relates to education, and one relates to policy. With respect to testing, what is needed is greater HIV testing so that we can reach that 90% goal of individuals who are identified as living with HIV. And in order to do that, we really need to implement opt-out HIV testing at outpatient facilities as well as emergency departments. And this has been done at Maricopa Medical Center, Valleywise Maricopa Medical Center, since 2012. It's been an incredibly successful program that has identified hundreds of individuals living with HIV who were then able to be connected into care. The second provision really supports the Rapid Start Protocol that you heard from Dr. Vanek about and calls upon medical providers to be better educated, not only about HIV assessments and HIV treatment, but also to have knowledge about the Rapid Start Protocol so that we can get those HIV-positive identified patients into care as rapidly as possible on antiretrovirals and achieving that undetectable status, which we know is so critical, not only to their health, but also to prevent further transmission of HIV. And finally, we're asking the city council to support this declaration to call upon insurance companies, both private and public, payers of health insurance, to adopt a policy of open access to HIV prescriptions. Some HIV formularies have all medications on their formulary. Medicare is a formulary that, as a matter of policy, includes every single HIV therapy on their formulary. The Arizona AIDS Drug Assistance Program includes all HIV therapies on their formularies. Access is not currently including every medication on their therapy, and there are some holes in private insurance companies. These three initiatives will help us to attain those 90, 90, 90 goals. You've heard that we've made considerable progress, which we all feel really great about. But at the same time, there's further work to be done. The ad hoc committee respectfully requests that the city council adopt this declaration. And I would be happy to address any questions about that if you have any. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you for that presentation. But more importantly, thank you for the hard work to make this a better city. I will now turn it to our chairwoman for comments, Councilwoman Pastor.
Hello. First, I would like to start off by thanking all the chairs of the Subcommittee, of course, David Martinez III, Dr. Vanek, Kenja, love the shirt, Hassan, and Glenn Spencer for all the work that you have done. So really appreciate the work. It's been four years now, and we're moving along. What I would like to highlight is their partnership with the Arizona Department of Health Services in helping develop a City of Phoenix Rapid Start Protocol, Start State of Arizona Rapid Treatment, and also the Arizona Christian Communities of Faith National HIV Testing Day participation. Really enjoyed working with the faith-based leaders in getting rid of, or not getting rid of, or working on the stigma and really opening up and having access of having this conversation. The 2019 People Living with HIV Survey Report, HIV/AIDS Online Training Module, available for the City of Phoenix employees, which I encourage every city staff to take this course to become educated and break the myth. That will be highlighted tomorrow with my Phoenix Connect. We have had, we have worked very hard and want to just say I'm excited that we did this and did the partnership. As you know, it's a global partnership. So I want to recommend, or I would like to make a motion, that council adopt the declaration that calls upon medical systems and providers throughout the city and health insurance providers to implement policies that will better enable the committee to achieve its goals.
And I will second that. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I apologize. We just saw that there was a posting error, and so the item was not posted for action. But I talked to the city attorney, and what we can do today is, based on the expressions of support that we're hearing and that we hear, we would have the item on the 16th for a formal ratification by the city council. But you can certainly express your support for this in this meeting through verbal comments.
Okay. So we'll make it happen next, December 16th. Okay, so we'll make it happen next, December 16th, right?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I too want to thank our speakers.
Well, thank you to our committee and our councilwoman.
You can just tell by their passion, this is an important issue, and it's an honor to
We really are impressed by the progress made so far and the plan to move forward, and we
serve as a co-chair of the Fast Track Cities Initiative Ad-Hoc Committee.
look forward to continuing to discuss it next week. Thank you for your leadership.
It's actually a lot of fun being a co-chair with Councilwoman Pastore.
We will next move to item number two on our agenda, which is COVID-19 update and next
I must say, I think this is important that we do pass this declaration.
steps. Exciting for us at the City of Phoenix, this is our first update where we will be talking
I think it is vital to keep moving forward in combating this epidemic.
about vaccines. Just this week, the first individual had a clinically-tested vaccination delivered outside
I think there's still work to be done, and I am proud to be a part of it, and hopefully
of a trial, so that is moving forward internationally, and we expect a major milestone with the
next week we will be able to pass it. Thank you, and thanks again to all the members who came down to speak today.
US approval process. I'm sorry? City manager, did you want to say something?
I really appreciate all your hard work.
I'm sorry, we're just getting our staff arranged at the table.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. We are ready.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. DeHoney, introduce the item.
Could city staff check all the policies that the city provides, different insurances,
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. By all accounts, this has been a tumultuous year for us, but the City of Phoenix, under
and make sure that what we are proposing is covered in our own insurance policies? I think it's very important that we follow through what we're saying, because I think
your direction and your strategies, have executed a lot of things to serve the members
this is very important.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Stark, yes, we will do a check of that and
of the community. So we're going to wrap up 2020 today by doing a little reflection on things that we've
ensure that our insurance policies at the city conform with this recommendation.
done, but also with a look towards the future. Our presentation today will be in two parts, and it looks like we're going to begin by talking about the vaccine. To do that is Brent Olson, our Director of Emergency Management, and he will provide a presentation for it. Thank you. Brent?
I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm here today to provide an update about what we know right now about COVID-19 vaccines and the planning currently underway for vaccinations when it becomes available. I need to start this presentation by saying that much of this planning is still very fluid and subject to change, particularly since we don't yet have any vaccines that have been approved, and authorization is ongoing. In fact, it has, I'm going to try to stay away from a lot of numbers and dates right now because it's changed three times today since my first meeting at 10:00 AM this morning. But I do want to talk about a little bit of the review and the advisory committees that are looking at this, and then how it's going to be brought out in the state. So to start with, there are two vaccines being considered, and I'm sure you have seen this in the news, the Pfizer vaccine, which they're referring to as Vaccine A, and then the Moderna vaccine, which is Vaccine B. Now, these, both vaccines have applied for emergency use authorization, and they are in process. A review, there are a whole bunch of processes involved, but the two that have gotten the most attention recently are the two committees that report to the FDA. One is the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, or ACIP, which makes a recommendation on the appropriate initial vaccine allocation. In other words, they decide who should get it first, which is very important, given that it's going to be very limited quantities at the onset. The ACIP met on December 1st, 2020, and proposed that the vaccine be allocated in three phases, and that the first phase, Phase 1, be divided into three sub-phases. Phase 1A, which is what we're planning for right now, will be focused on healthcare workers, emergency medical services, and long-term care residents who are at high risk. The recommendations have been supported at the CDC level by the CDC Director, and he has already signed interim CDC recommendations. A more comprehensive review is being done by the Vaccines and Related Biological Product and Advisory Committee, who evaluates the trial data for safety, for effectiveness, and for use, the proper use for the vaccines. They are scheduled to review both of these vaccines, one on this week on December 10th, and then the second vaccine, Moderna, Vaccine B, is going to be reviewed on December 17th. It is very, there are very high hopes that both of these vaccines will be approved for emergency use. Now, the Vaccines and Related Biological Product Advisory Committee will be televising their meetings. These meetings run from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM on these two dates, Arizona time, and they'll be on multiple online channels, including YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter. I know I'm going to try to watch at least part of it so I know what they're talking about with it. Now, once they get through this and the emergency use authorization is granted, then it comes down to the state, and the state has a, the Arizona Vaccine and Antiviral Prioritization Advisory Committee, which makes recommendations based on what the federal guidance is on how it should be allocated at the state level. These decisions have to be made at the state level because each state is different, each state has different priorities, and it can't be centralized in just the federal guidance. So the state has a say in this as well. So about the vaccines, we talked about Vaccine A and Vaccine B, the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine. Both of these vaccines are based on new science, which is called messenger RNA science, and it is a two-dose vaccine. And the vaccine you've heard so much about recently is the Pfizer vaccine because it requires ultra-cold storage at minus 70 degrees Celsius. This vaccine has been described as being a little bit more fragile. It requires very careful mixing, and there is actually, on one of my slides that I had originally set to go, said it ships in 1,000-dose containers, and that is actually inaccurate. It's actually 1,000 vials. It's funny what a difference a word can make. But it comes in 1,000 vial containers that can be, once they're mixed, is 5,000 doses per container. So this vaccine is best suited for large organizations, large areas, large jurisdictions that can actually disperse that much vaccine. The vaccine, again, is, like I said, is a two-dose vaccine. The second vaccine has to be given sometime after a 21-day mark. They haven't given us how much time after 21 days it's still good for, but the booster has to be given after 21 days have elapsed since the first dose. The Moderna vaccine, very, very similar. It is also based on the mRNA science, and the trial data for both of these vaccines is between 90 and 95% efficacy, so everybody is very excited about this. The difference between the Moderna vaccine and the Pfizer vaccine is the Moderna vaccine doesn't require the ultra-cold storage. It can be stored in a regular freezer, which makes it a little bit easier to manage. It's also available in lots of 100 doses rather than the 1,000 vials or the 5,000 doses. So it's better suited for the smaller jurisdictions. So vaccine distribution, both vaccine makers have produced a quantity of vaccine that they had stored in anticipation of being approved for the emergency use. The Pfizer vaccine is stating that they'll have 50 million doses available by the end of 2020, and Moderna's saying 20 million. One thing to keep in mind, the UK received emergency use, or granted emergency use for the Pfizer vaccine on the 2nd, and they have already received vaccine. In fact, I saw in the news this morning, the first recipient of the vaccine in the UK. So I don't know how many doses have been reserved for the US. They haven't really stated, but we do know that we are allocated in Arizona for vaccine. And the first vaccines were reported, and this is one of the dates I'm going to tell you has changed. The news reported, one of the news outlets reported that we could get it as early as December 15th. Well, that's not inaccurate, but it probably won't be the 15th. That was one of the dates that I was given today that has changed. It looks like it may be the 17th now, but again, that's not set in stone and could change, it could have changed by the time I left the office earlier this afternoon. So when is it going to be available in Arizona? The 17th, probably, and we are prepared to start dispensing it. And following the guidance of the CDC, the VA PAC has agreed, or the state has at least agreed, that the vaccine will be in a phased approach. Phase 1A will be healthcare, and particularly those on the front line. It will be emergency medical services, and it will be long-term care facilities that will be getting it in that 1A period. Another one of the news stories quoting Arizona Department of Health Services says Maricopa County is expected to get 40,000 doses within the next week to get started. Our allocation for the county is higher than that. I don't have the exact number, but it's not going to come all at once. It's going to become, it's going to come in shipments, and we'll be tailoring the dispensing to that. The vaccine phases, Phase 1A for the healthcare workers will be handled at a regional level. One of the things that we met and decided on between public health, the hospitals, and emergency management was that it would be better to pool resources and be able to do five points of dispensing sites for mass distribution to the healthcare workers, and that's the plan that's moving forward. It is, I keep using the term phased, but that seems to be the watchword for this. It will be a phased opening, so we will open pods that we have vaccine to support. So it depends on when the vaccine comes. We know the Moderna vaccine won't even get a look until February, or I'm sorry, December 17th. So the Pfizer vaccine will be the first out, and then when the Moderna vaccine couples with that, we'll have additional vaccine in the state, but it's going to depend on where it gets allocated and how much we have to distribute. So that's how it's going to be handled right now, and there are five, the five pods. And I'm sorry, I'm not keeping up with the slides very well, but these are the additional Phase 2, or Phase 1B will probably occur very close to when 1A ends. It will focus on critical workforce. It will also finish what we have left of healthcare workers in any of the long-term care facilities, but we will be going into those critical workforces, including law enforcement falls in 1B, and then anything that is determined by society. And there is guidance from CISA and from the FDA on what critical workforce is, but that's something that needs to be looked at at the local level, and we'll be discussing that. So potential for Phase B focus is, again, the city employees, law enforcement, and that's going to be incumbent upon us to decide how that's going to be done. And we've started discussing, because of the nature of the vaccine, it's not a simple matter of teaching somebody how to give a vaccine and giving them a needle and having them go out and vaccinate people. It has to be done by medical professionals, and they have to know how to handle it, particularly if it's the Pfizer vaccine. So one of the recommendations from Department of Health is that we get contractors, enlist contractors to help with that process. So that's something that we will be discussing with management to determine the best way to do that. And that is the extent of my presentation. This is just kind of a graphic to show you the phases in color charts. The yellow is the healthcare phase, EMS and long-term care. The blue is in Phase 1B, and then 1C will be focused on those high-risk people, primarily the over-65 group that is most susceptible to the vaccine, or to the COVID-19 virus. The pods are going to be separated by region. As I said, the central pod will be in central Phoenix here and primarily consist of Phoenix. The rest of them will encompass the rest of the cities in the northwest, the northeast, the southwest, and the southeast, and hospitals are taking the lead on doing these pods for the community, for the healthcare community as we move forward. So we talked about planning assumptions for B already, so at this point, that concludes my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Brent. Thank you for your presentation, as well as the work that you are doing to support vaccine delivery. It really is exciting for vaccine delivery to be moving forward, and we appreciate the work you have done, as well as so many city partners. Our city departments have helped understand the cold storage in our community. They have provided advice about logistics, and I am certainly proud, as mayor, of the role we are playing in this enormous effort. We are not the lead agency, but we are doing such important work, and we know that vaccines and that vital shot, or two vital shots in the arm, are essential to our path moving forward. I am looking forward to the day when the general public can get that vaccine, and excited that it's about to be available to some of our first responders. I have invited Maricopa County Public Health to speak before the Phoenix City Council. They were unable to join us this week, but I hope they will take us up on that offer in the future. I want to coordinate as much as possible. I am trying to speak with the county supervisors who represent Phoenix about how we can work together to make sure our residents get the best possible information about vaccines. We know we have many residents who are very eager to move forward and get that vaccine, and we look forward to using the city relationships to help support the public health workers who are doing this vital work. Thank you to all the researchers out there, all the people who have been doing planning. It's going to be a big effort, and we are really looking forward to it. We do have two members of the public to address the city council, so if my colleagues are okay, we will start with those two and go to the phones. We will begin with Shanna Cinnamon, followed by Anthony Kozowski, and they will address the council on the topic of COVID-19 report update.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My concern is about the mandating of vaccines, and just because this is new science and there's no pharmaceutical that is 100% safe for 100% of individuals, and I was just wondering what the city's plan is for, you know, if you plan to mandate it, or if it's still going to be our choice to decide if we want to take that vaccine or not, and still be able to go into public places, travel, not require it for employment, things like that.
Our final public comment will be from Anthony Kozowski.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. I believe that the big pharmaceutical companies do not have our best interest in mind, and just like in constant, countless other instances, the human population is looked at as customers and not patients. Just for some information for the city council, Pfizer specifically has been charged over $4 billion over the last 20 years for false claim acts, off-label or unapproved promotion, as well as foreign corrupt practices. These vaccines have not been used previously, this type of technology, and for me personally, I think that this is a very scary instant that you all are excited to get this going in. and just because this is new science and there's no pharmaceutical that is 100% safe for 100% of individuals, and I was just wondering what the city's plan is for, you know, if you plan to mandate it, or if it's still going to be our choice to decide if we want to take that vaccine or not, and still be able to go into public places, travel, not require it for employment, things like that.
Thank you. Our final public comment will be from Anthony Kozowski.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. I believe that the big pharmaceutical companies do not have our best interest in mind. And just like in constant, countless other instances, the human population is looked at as customers and not patients. Just for some information for the city council, Pfizer specifically has been charged over $4 billion over the last 20 years for false claim acts, off-label or unapproved promotion, as well as foreign corrupt practices. These vaccines have not been used previously, this type of technology. And for me personally, I think that this is a very scary instant that you all are excited to get this going and pods set up instead of promoting actual healthy types of engagement in the community, like increasing vitamins and zinc, vitamin C, vitamin D, these things that have been shown in study after study to assist with COVID-19, as well as looking at other practices from holistic type of medical professionals that also have been shown to have outstanding rates of cure and help with the patients getting back to a normal way of, way of life and beating this virus. I think that just rushing towards vaccinations, and vaccinations in general, is not something that we need to be depending on, and maybe making some better food choices, and just a safer and better community rollout instead of a vaccine, again, that has not been tested and isn't new technology.
Thank you. That is our final public comment on Agenda Item Number Two. Councilmember comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you, Brent, and I think we will continue to discuss this important topic as we get more information and as vaccines roll out in our community. We will next move to Agenda Item Three, which is the Coronavirus Relief Fund Update and Closeout Process. We get to get an update on the important work our city staff and partners have been doing as we fight COVID-19 and as we support our community. I can't start this item without acknowledging the hard work, database decisions, and preventative measures our city staff and our city has taken. All of these decisions are being made with our residents and their safety as our top priority. Here at the city of Phoenix, we have faced this challenge headfirst. Want to thank our city staff for stepping up, being innovative, doing things that you did not realize were in your job description. So want to thank our city council. The council mandated a citywide mask ordinance when we got the power to do so, and we have seen lowercase numbers as a result. We planned ahead and made sure our essential city functions and city employees could continue. We worked diligently to ensure that COVID relief dollars made it to our local businesses and residents. We've done things we've never done before, including opening the convention center as a heat respite center for social distancing for our residents experiencing homelessness, as well as providing socially distant voting. So lots of firsts this year in the city of Phoenix. Before COVID-19, the city had no experience in testing, and now, a few months later, the city has hosted over 60 community testing events and deployed mobile COVID-19 testing in form of van. We are in the throes of another surge with today's case numbers over 12,000, our highest daily record yet. I'm here to say it again, masks are the single best defense we have right now against the virus. We need a statewide mask mandate, but until we have that, and while we have that, please follow all the protections, stay home when you are able, and try to stay safe. We'll look forward to using the best scientific thinking to protect the people of Phoenix and to support our amazing healthcare workforce. Thank you to, to those out there fighting COVID-19. Thank you to our city leadership. I will turn it over to someone who has been so central in all of this planning, our Assistant City Manager Milton DeHoney.
Thank you, Mayor. To provide a wrap-up of COVID 2020, and to talk about, give some reflections on how we have utilized the nearly $300 million that we received from the federal government, and also with an eye toward what might be next, we'll turn the presentation over to Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton.
Thank you, Milton. Mayor, members of the council. Before I begin today's presentation, I wanted to take a couple of moments. We've been at this for now seven months since you put the plan in action on May 5th. And, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge your leadership, your guidance, as we kind of dispensed this money to the community, as the mayor mentioned in her opening remarks. I think I would also be remiss if I didn't help or acknowledge the people that helped me manage this money from day to day, and that's my folks in finance, Denise Olson and her staff, as well as my staff in budget and research, and the staff in audit that have helped me make sure that, on real time, that we've actually been in compliance, so checking up on our vendors and our providers. So I think it's important that I do that. I also think it's important to emphasize that we were one of the first cities in the, in the country to actually roll out a strategic plan that dispensed this money, that dispersed it amongst our community and amongst our organization. And as a result of that, Denise and I have been on countless WebEx's, webinars, and providing guidance and assistance to cities across the country in relationship to how we spend this money, what's allowable, what's not allowable. So we've, the city of Phoenix has become a subject matter expert on the coronavirus relief funds, and that's directly a result of your leadership, your guidance, and I want to thank you for that. So as we move into the formal part of my presentation, if I can get the clicker. So again, starting here, we've always started with this. This is your revised strategic plan with the $293 million that we received directly from the Treasury. I'm not going to go through this, but you did allocate, after revisions, about $78.2 million to community investment, $71.8 million for city operations. And what was initially a reserve was ultimately turned into a public safety salary offset to specifically, and help us offset a potential general fund shortfall as we went through the budget adoption process for fiscal year 2021. That alleviated deep cuts, that eliminated all cuts in our service provision. So again, I want to, I want to acknowledge that. So as we talk about the closeout strategy, as I've emphasized from day one, the current guidelines and regulations state that all CRF funds must be utilized and expended by December 30th, with some small exceptions to that. Again, any unspent funds must be returned back to the United States Treasury Department. As I've said before, it's in our best interest, it's in the community's best interest to fully expend all of these funds, to use every single dollar and not send any back. The plan that I'm going to walk you through today, as well as the plan that you adopted back on May 5th, was all designed and predicated on ensuring that all of these funds are expended in advance of that deadline. Any expenses that are deemed inappropriate by the US Treasury or OIG when they come in for their closeout audit will be recouped, meaning that we will have to return and pay back anything that they deem as inappropriate. That's why it was really important for us to kind of evaluate this on the fly with the staff that I've been using from audit and budget and research to evaluate that portion. There is, again, a movement currently by a bipartisan group of senators, led by Senator Murkowski out of Alaska, to extend the coronavirus relief fund deadline to as far as September 21. But again, I think in where we stand today, and we've had this discussion before, I think it's in our best interest to spend all of this effective December 30th, regardless, you know, to the extent that we can, because I think it puts us in a better position as future stimulus funds make themselves available. So the closeout strategy that I want to walk you through today is based on our assessment of where we are relative to spending to date, where invoices are, where we think goods are coming in. Again, we've had significant supply chain disruption over the last, you know, since March. And again, we're trying to navigate that. So this is a bit of a moving target, but this is our best guess as to where we stand today. Based on that and based on your allocations, we think that we'll have directly spent out of the coronavirus relief fund just under $250 million, $249,900 to be exact. That leaves about $43.4 million that we know is not going to be expended by the deadline. And so we are, again, today seeking your approval to use the public safety provision, to use those funds to offset general fund public safety salaries. Of that $43.4 million, $34.5 million is needed to facilitate existing projects and programs that you've already approved, to name a few of those. One, US Vets, the property acquisition. We know that cannot be done by December 30th, so we'd like to use the public safety provision on that. We also know that the Digital Divide project that Councilwoman Pastore has been spearheading and leading is not also, will also not be completed by December 30. So again, we'd like to use the public safety provision on that. Last week, you also approved $3.5 million of additional community testing efforts to continue testing through the end of the fiscal year at the current level that we're doing. That, again, will not be expended, and we can't prepay with COVID funds. So again, we need to use the public safety offset there as well. Also, testing for our employees, we've spent about $3.2 million to date, and we know we need about, you know, the balance of the $2.8 million that you allocated to continue testing. And we also know that we've got some additional needs for facilities, which will not get done in time. That leaves about $8.9 million for you. That was initially programmed in projects that just aren't moving, or that we've satisfied the need to some extent that allows you to reprogram these funds. But again, given the timeframe, I think it makes sense to roll that into our public safety offset in the general fund totaling that $43.4 million. And again, this is consistent with what we've done previously. I did present this to the GFOA last Monday, Denise and I. We have a weekly call with the GFOA and our counterparts in other cities, and they all thought that that was a very sound and wise approach, and majority of those cities are going to use this, this public safety salary offset as a backstop against this last couple of days in the end here. Again, this also gives Denise and I time to finalize the quarterly report that's due to the US Treasury on January 11th. So walking you through just kind of some high-level detail. Employee testing, again, we, we know we've spent $3.2. We know we're going to need the balance of the $2.8 between now and June, so there's, there's no money left in that particular program. PPE, cleaning and sanitizing, again, this is largely based on supply chain. And again, we've got orders in of about $19 million. Some of that has actually come in, and we've actually taken possession and paid. But again, we're still kind of figuring out how much of that is actually going to satisfy here at the end, but we'll keep monitoring that. That does leave about $1 million for you as the council to, to roll into your reallocation plan and strategy. Public safety, medical and public safety measures. I look at this one kind of along the same lines as our facility measures. These are all things that are tied to facility improvements, getting people back to work safely and re-engaging our community in a safe and consistent manner. So these are everything from touchless light switches, the faucets, the doorstops, as well as some of the other facilities, things that we've, that we have below. We did allocate these separately just to have delineation for the federal government when we were approving these, but we've spent a million of this to date. We do have about $4 million worth of items that are either in, in stage or have been ordered. A lot of that is really for the Parks Department. Then we've got payroll expense reimbursement. This is one where we did, the last time we came to you on October 13th, we did pull a little bit of money here for the last reallocation that we did. We have allocated still about $15.8 million. We think we're only at max going to use $4.2, so that leaves about $11.6 for you to reallocate. Our public facility retrofit, again, this is really largely based on $8 million plan to retrofit our facilities, again, a continuation and extension of the things that I mentioned previously in public safety measures. But it also even goes further with cube configurations, read during the jury boxes in the courtroom, ordering Plexiglas, all of those different measures that you've seen us take in over the last couple of weeks and months. This also includes $3 million for the bus shields for the Transit Department. Those items will not be completed in time, and so again, we have to roll about $6 million of this money over into our general fund public safety salary offset, leaving nothing available to reprogram here. Telework and e-government, we've got a lot of good work going on. I mean, a lot of employees, almost 4,000 employees teleworking. We've, we've done a lot of video conferencing in conference rooms. We've got a lot of great projects that, that won't make it in time for December 30, and so we know we've got to carry those over. Two specifically that I'll mention here, one is the 311 project. We know that will not be turned on and operational by December 30, which is a requirement. And we also are implementing a new e-learning module for our PeopleSoft system, so employees can, can take classes remotely rather than in person to, again, create social distancing. Of this $17 million, we know there's about $5.3 of this that we do need to carry over that will not be completed, and those are largely based on those two projects that I just mentioned to you just now. So again, in total, you allocated $71.8 million. We have a need of about $59.2, so that leaves about $12.6 million for reallocation. Now, that $12.6 million is going to be offset by what I'm going to walk you through now on the community side where we've slightly overspent. Business assistance, Chris Mackey's done a fabulous job over 2,000 businesses, and Mitch Manchaca has also done a great job with our local artists as well as nonprofit groups. This project and this program is fully extended. In fact, Chris actually has about $3 million worth of applications queued up and ready to fund if additional funding is available. But as of today, they've spent everything that they had allocated to them. Mortgage rent utility assistance, this is the one where we're using Wildfire to kind of quarterback with our partner agencies. The guidance did change on this slightly before Thanksgiving, and the guidance, I have it in the report for your reading. The guidance does say that if we got these applications in prior to December 30th, and we are reimbursing or assisting people with bills that came due prior to December 30, we can continue to process those after December 30th. So for that reason, I'm not suggesting that we use the public safety salary offset on this. We'll just leave these funds in the coronavirus relief fund. But I do know that Wildfire, as of last week, had about 3,000 applications in queue. And again, to my knowledge, we had about $16 million worth of expenditures in our plan, and they only had about $3 million, $3.5 million left. So we feel very confident that they've got enough applications in queue to satisfy all of those funds. Distance learning and Wi-Fi, again, this is the, largely based on the $2 million bridging the Digital Divide project. That is actually, the IGA is coming to council, I believe, next week. But again, that project, one of the requirements for coronavirus relief fund that came in the last month or so states that any property acquisition or any system that you are acquiring, they all need to be operational by December 30, not just purchased. They need to be operational and implemented. So obviously, that's not going to be done, so we are asking to carry some portion of that over. But there is about $100,000 worth of savings in this area, and that specifically came from the laptops and tablets that we bought for the public housing residents. Those costs came in slightly under what we initially estimated. Mitigation and care for vulnerable populations, $21.5 million was allocated. We feel that we're going to spend about $20.8 million, and that does account for the additional monies that are needed for testing, as well as the additional money that we needed to kind of close out the respite center, because we did extend that beyond what we initially had intended. There is about $700,000 left in that particular area. And then food delivery, we had $6.4 million that we've worked with local, local food banks, St. Vincent de Paul's, the Arizona Food Bank, as well as Lisk and Local First. We have every belief that all of those funds will clearly be expended by the end of this month, but there is always a need for additional food if, if the council so pleases. Better health and community testing, so again, we got $7.1 million here. We also included in this category, beyond the testing, we've got funds for the schools where we bought PPE, and Tim Valencia has also recently just acquired almost 5,000 computers that will be delivering to kids hopefully by the end of the month in the various school districts to help, again, continue to bridge that digital divide. So that overage that you see there is largely driven, in fact, by the, the $3.5 million that you awarded last week with, with testing. So in total, $78.2 million was allocated. The need is $81.7, so there's your $3.5 million delta, which is largely made up of that, that testing area that we talked about. And so when I offset that with the $12.6 that we had on the other slide, you've got about $8.9 million available for council to reallocate and reprogram, which, again, given the timing, we'd roll that into our public safety salary offset. So again, I say all that to recommend the following, that we use the $43.4 million that we know is not going to make it out the door by December 30 to offset public safety salaries, of which we would use $34.5 million to continue to fund previously approved programs that I've mentioned. And the $8.9 million is available to, for you today to reprogram. We, again, based on my conversations with you, as well as the staff and the departments that have been responsible for providing these programs, we know there's a need for additional business assistance as our businesses continue to struggle with coronavirus, anywhere from $1 to $3 million, based on what Chris has in queue. We know that additional community testing is something that is continued to be needed as our testing numbers go up, and I believe Mr. DeHoney is scheduled to come back and talk to you next week about some additional testing protocols, which would include a additional van, a mobile van, and possibly two static sites. But again, I believe that's scalable based upon what you, what you see as the need as you address this $8.9 million. Food relief, again, we've talked about that. We know there's $500 to $1 million that could be used by Local First, as well as some of our school districts to provide additional and continued food assistance programs. And after-school programs is something that we've also heard about. Again, I don't know what, we've, we've talked to Parks... Again, I don't know what, we've talked to Parks. The challenge here is that a lot of the schools will be going on break here shortly. We also know that some of those schools also may not be going back after the break depending upon where we stand with the coronavirus curve. So again, we think a modest $200,000 to $300,000 could be leveraged here to do some things, but we could also do some things as we move forward in our budget process that could possibly be more meaningful at a later date. And then, again, finally, utility homeless eviction and prevention, again, based on where we stand with Wildfire, based on the demand, and based on the, again, the moratorium on evictions is set to expire. We could throw anywhere from $3 to $5 million at this program and make a good dent. Again, it wouldn't erase everything that's out there, but we could definitely make a good dent there. Again, these actions are designed, number one, to ensure that we maintain compliance with the federal government, that we completely exhaust these funds by December 30, that we continue to approve and to fund programs that you previously approved, but also give you the ability to address other needs that have come up or that have continued to get worse. The benefit of using this public safety salary offset at this stage, we eliminate a couple of different burdens that have been placed upon us, mainly that December 30 deadline. COVID obviously does not have a December 30 expiration date, and some of the monies that we have could be used beyond that if we simply transition them to the general fund. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Wonderful. Thank you for that excellent presentation and on the hard work that went into this great plan and implementation. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a recommendation that we adopt. I want to thank Jeff and Denise both for being so creative and helping us along. I would like to propose that we use $2.7 million for utilities that we talked about earlier in the day, and anything beyond what we need would go towards prevention of homelessness. Then $2.8 for business assistance, $3 million for testing, continued testing, $200,000 for food and after-school programs. And I think that should bring us to like $8.9 million.
Mayor, I will second. I just want clarification, though, on the $2.7. That also includes eviction, correct?
Right.
Because that's part of preventing, okay, thank you. I'll second.
The $2.7 would be for our wildfire program?
And for our water.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilwoman Pastore?
I have a substitute. And I don't know if I needed to do a substitute, but I really would like to look at moving more money to wildfire. So, I didn't write down all the numbers that are being suggested. So if I could...
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, if we could just, if we could clarify, because as I wrote it down, I'm $200,000 short. $2.7 for utilities, $2.8?
And eviction.
And eviction. $2.8 was for business?
$2 million for business assistance.
$3.0 for testing?
Yes.
And $200,000?
And that's $500.
$500.
For food, yeah, for food. I can't read my mind.
Food and after-school both?
Yes. Because we don't know if the schools will even be open.
Okay, and...
But we knew people will be hungry.
So that takes me to $9 million even, so in one of those, we need to reduce by 100,000. Would you do $2.9 million for testing?
Yes.
Okay, so that equals to $8.9.
Right.
Okay, so $2.7 for utilities, homelessness and eviction prevention, including the water, $2.8 for business assistance, $2.9 for testing, and $500,000 for food and after-school.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ed, can you read that again?
Yes, ma'am. $2.7 million for utilities, including our water, homelessness and eviction.
Hang on.
Yeah.
The utilities, water, eviction.
Homelessness prevention.
Okay, that's under the $2.7. Okay, my question to that is that includes wildfire, is that the entity that we use?
Yes.
So, I would like to, I don't want to do a second, I would like to up that amount.
It depends on what you're taking it from.
Okay, give me the rest of the numbers.
Okay, that was $2.7. $2.8 was to the business assistance program. $2.9 was for the testing expansion, and .5 million or 500,000 for food and after-school programming.
So my understanding about the business assistant program is after talking with several staff, is that we need... $87K is what's pending right now with approved applications.
We have more than that.
No, I know, I understand that, but with what is happening, we're waiting for the pending ruling from the court of all eligible people, I think there will be a need for more money in utilities, water, eviction, and homeless prevention.
Mayor, if I could clarify, Chris Mackey is at the table, but for the business assistance program, just to put it in context, Chris has about $87,000 worth of applications that were approved, but we ran out of money. And then she's got about $3.3 million worth of applications, or $3 million that are ready, teed up, queued, ready to go, just needing funding.
So do I need to do a substitute, or should I just, can we have a discussion?
I think, and I'm sorry for the pause, I thought we were getting additional comment from a staff member.
Mayor, no, I think unless there are specific questions for Ms. Mackey, Mr. Bard clarified, there's $87,000 of applications that have been approved, but we ran out of funding, and then there's $3 million or so, as I understand it, Chris, of applications that have not gone through the process, but they are in possession of the Community Foundation.
That is correct. Okay, and then it's my understanding that Wildfire does have capacity to take on some of their additional applications they had been asking their providers to stop taking new applications to try to manage the remaining funds. But I don't know if staff got feedback on sort of what is the capacity there noting the end of the calendar year?
Mayor, I did have a conversation with Spencer herself tomorrow. We get our normal update from Wildfire tomorrow, and Spencer is here, he could actually, oh, there you are.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a brief conversation with Cynthia, and if the December deadline remains, they would have a challenge in distributing additional funds. However, they did say they would be able to work with us on that, particularly given our current understanding of the regulations, which allows for any applications that are received by the end of the month to be processed and funded, you know, within the 60 days after January 1st.
Wonderful. We sure know that people in our community are challenged, and we want people to be able to stay in their housing, so eviction prevention is one that is, I think, close to this council's heart.
Mayor?
So, I think Councilwoman Pastore is still, I'll continue to recognize Councilwoman Pastore.
I'm going to make a substitute. I hope it adds up. Based on the guidance provided, I understand that we can continue to fund utility homelessness eviction prevention applications received by December 30. Therefore, I move to allocate an additional $4.3 million to Wildfire to be earmarked pending a court ruling clarifying all eligible people to fund these new potential applications. I also direct staff to review and update contracts to reflect the updated eligibility and data reporting requirements. Further, I move to allow staff to use the remaining... 300, I mean 300, $39.1 million in coronavirus relief funds to offset public safety salaries in general fund by an equal amount and use the $34.5 million of the Freedom General Fund to continue projects previously approved by council listed in the packet. Further, I direct staff to prioritize the use of any general funds offset by the public safety transfer in the following. $2 million for Project Assist, $87K towards small business assistance with applications that have already been approved, $2 million to additional testing, and $500K towards food relief.
Mayor, can we have her repeat that, please?
That was, Councilwoman, would you mind repeating your motion?
The numbers or the whole thing?
The numbers.
Okay. I move to allocate an additional $4.3 million to Wildfire, $2 million to Project Assist, $87K towards the small business assistance, $2 million additional, $2 million to additional testing,
And just to be clear, for business assistance, of the $8.9 million, is any of it going to business assistance?
I did the $87K of what staff had told.
But that's...
Of towards the approved.
Not from the $8.9, that would be, as I understood your motion, it would be from Freed Up General Fund.
$4.3 million would be additional if you're asking about the...
Okay, I am not completely sure that I have gotten it, but I will go to council member questions and try to figure it out.
I'll sit here.
First to Councilmember Garcia and then Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's really important that we direct as much as we can directly to people. I think particularly folks who are excluded from the wildfire, monies that I think are now going to be eligible, that we should give enough opportunity for those folks to come and obtain those funds. Similar with Project Assist, I think it's money that goes directly to people along with obviously the testing and the food are the things that we've been able to spend the most on. I do believe that we will get more funds next year, and I think we have prioritized homeless, small business, and the schools. And I feel less, I feel like we're going to be able to take care of them next year, but I do feel there's uncertainty of what that money would be used for quickly in the sense of we don't know if schools are coming back and there's other plans moving. And so, I second Councilwoman Pastore's motion because I believe that gets money to our residents directly, and I feel that, I wish we would have been able to do more of that early on seeing the trouble that folks have been through. And now that the pandemic has increased, I hope we can prioritize giving money directly to assisting families in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. So, like Councilman Garcia, the best way to help people is through directly doing that. It saves all the administrative costs. It literally cuts down on everything. We have close to $5.9 million, or no, $5.2 million of individuals in the city of Phoenix that are struggling right now with their water bills, can't make those type of payments, for real. What ends up happening, and this is how government sticks it to everybody because they end up taking it, these are direct payments that need to go directly to the public. That $143 million that we used as the public safety offset should have gone directly to the public. This is where the public that are suffering the most are the ones who get these checks. But every time somebody touches it, every time somebody touches their hand on this thing, that's how much more money gets taken away from those people that are in need. I will support anything that goes directly to them, not to organizations, not to anything else. If you want to put something on a table like that, I'd support it. It's hard to turn down any of these proposals, quite frankly, but at the end of the day, if you want to do the right thing for people, you got to give them the money directly. That $143 million should go directly to the public that we took, the city of Phoenix took for its coffers. That should never have happened. That was meant for the public that's suffering. The public is suffering right now. They need the money. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio. We'll go to Councilwoman Stark next.
Thank you. I appreciate, we do need to help people in need, but I think the small business assistance has been a great program because it has helped people in need. It's helped the small business people continue to manage their businesses and keep them out of trouble and preventing them having to go into asking for utility assistance. I know my hairdresser took advantage of it, and it kept her afloat, kept her and her husband afloat. So I think we need to put something into the small business program. I talked to a gentleman yesterday who wants to apply, but we don't have any money. And again, this is his livelihood. He wants to keep his business going so he doesn't have to ask for additional assistance from us. So I want to see a balance in both the business assistance and the money that we earmark for Wildfire. I don't know if we can get to a consensus, but I clearly think our small business assistance has been very successful in keeping people out of financial troubles. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for Chris Mackey. Is she still there?
Yes, we'll have her come to the table. Yes, Vice Mayor, she's here.
Great, thank you so much. Chris, I have a question for you. Obviously, you know that I've been a huge advocate and someone that's pushed really hard making sure that we continue to help our small businesses. But my question is, how many, how much money is still left over from the state or the county to help out the small businesses?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, as we look at the other programs that were available alongside our program, the county did implement and run their small business program with the Arizona Community Foundation as well. Their monies, to my knowledge, they sunsetted their money on November 13th, meaning the county, as they reached the bottom. I don't know exactly what's left at the state level for the small business programs as they were really allocating it through other methods, but I can certainly find that out for you quickly.
That would be great. Yeah, thank you so much for that. I mean, my comment on all of this is, yes, I've always been a huge advocate for small businesses, I've seen them thrive through these, through these grants and making sure that we're able to support them and help them. But then I also see, especially with the holidays around the corner, I see people in my district and in other districts struggling and thinking, how is it that they're gonna continue to pay their bills? How is it that they're gonna pay their water bill, their light bill? A lot of these families, again, these are working-class families that hate owing any money to, for their utilities, and right now they just can't pay for it, right? You know, living on 200 dollars a week is not something that people can actually do. So I do feel very strongly that, that, that we, we need to put more money into utilities. There's a lot, you know, like Councilmember Garcia said and Councilmember DeCecio said, like, we just have a lot of families in real need right now. And I do feel good about the money that we've put forward for small businesses. I think there's, you know, we've been really good about doing that, but right now, like, I do feel that, you know, we, we have to help out these families that are making less than a thousand dollars a month, right? Or about a thousand dollars a month that have no idea how they're gonna buy any Christmas gifts for their families. You know, we've just canceled, you know, the events that we would normally do around the holidays to give a gift to a child or to put, give them, you know, like, a nice meal and a nice celebration for their families. We're not gonna be able to do those either this year. So I, I think, you know, being able to allocate money, more money for utilities and give that sense of relief and maybe a little bit of a cushion so that they can buy a gift for their child, I think it's also very important. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chris, for that clarification.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have two members of the public to address the council, so I will go to the phones. We will begin with Vidi Hernandez, followed by Adrian Udarbe.
Hi, everyone. This is Vidi Hernandez with Blood and Action. Almost six months ago, right, the city excluded several immigrants from being able to qualify for the COVID Relief Fund. This included immigrants or people that had DACA, TPS, a U visa, were seeking asylum or undocumented. All of these different statuses and immigrant were excluded from being able to get any rent or bail assistance. That has been devastating, devastating to watch, devastating to witness, especially communities that have been hit the hardest by COVID. Many of these communities are also, you know, work within the city. On Friday, you know, part of this, there was a lawsuit on Friday, the judge ordered a tentative, gave a tentative order outlining that these communities should have never been excluded. The harm that that decision made, you know, months ago, has, in some cases, created some irreparable harm. Families who already lost their home, who already have gotten into a lot of debt. And so today, you know, as y'all are discussing this, we are here to ask the council to start in undoing and supporting and undoing some of this harm. You all have spoken about the devastation that we have seen. Just think about that with communities that have gotten no type of relief support at all, when they should have and they could have. And so we're asking you to allocate the remaining 9 million dollars, or, you know, I hear all these numbers being discussed, or at least, you know, the 6 million dollars to this rent and bill program. That includes, but also prioritizes immigrant communities, these immigrant communities that should have never been excluded to begin with. The undocumented fund, right, that was created as a result of this, and no way can support at the same level that the rent and bill assistance program y'all had could support that. And so we're just here to continue to say that this should have never happened, and we're asking y'all to allocate, again, all of the funds as much as possible directly to go to these communities, but especially to prioritize the communities that were excluded that shouldn't have. Thanks.
Thank you. Our final comment on this item will be from Adrian.
And we are requesting consideration for your additional food relief funding for an additional amount of 250,000 to be supported with the following food assistance efforts, which are 150,000 for Double Up Food Bucks in your Phoenix sites, to support the unprecedented program demands and utilization amid COVID-19, and 100,000 to support the implementation of the Arizona Farmers Market Nutrition Program, MATCH program, for families that are participating in WIC or the Women, Infants, and Children Program, and seniors, low-income seniors that are participating in CSFP. This CARES Act investment is a win-win-win because it allows more families to stretch their food dollars to bring home more healthy foods at a time when they need it most during the pandemic. Farmers are making more income and those dollars remain circulating in the local economy. So thank you for the time and the consideration of this request.
Thank you. That is our final public comment on Agenda Item 3. Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes, is, uh, um, Chris Mackey sitting at the table?
He's coming right now. He's here.
He or she?
She is here.
Okay, thank you. It's been long. I have a question about the small business assistance. Because I've been working with these numbers for the last three days, and what I was told was 87K is in the queue, that we did not have enough money, have been approved, but we ran out of money. Then I was told that if we were considering or looking at doing more small businesses to, for the applications that have been received, but not necessarily approved or processed, it's 3 million. So if we put 3 million into the player queue, we already have those applications and new people would not be able to apply.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it's Chris Mackey. You are correct in the information that you've provided. There are 87,000 dollars in applications that have been approved and we ran out of funding for. For the applications that are in the queue that have not been approved, that have all of their information in, that is approximately 3 million dollars, you are correct, that does not allow us to open up the program for any new applications.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Noakowski, a question for Chris.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you. So, Chris, I know a lot of these businesses that are, that were in my, in my district, were actually gonna close down, and they have employees. So do you happen to know with that extra 3 million dollars allocated, how many employees would be, um, kept hired during that, that period of time?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, that 3 million dollars represents approximately 485 businesses. So even if we went at the lowest level, I'm gonna do some quick math, which is never good for me, Mr. Barton does it much better than I do, but if we even, if we said that they were all micro businesses, it would be approximately 2,400 employees with those companies, and some will be larger than that, but that would be a conservative number we could give you.
So we're talking about over 2,000 individuals that will have a job, that won't be losing their job because of their boss is not having enough money to keep the doors open. So I think that, you know, even though that we have 87K that's still pending, I think we really need to look at increasing that a little bit, because a lot of those businesses in South Phoenix and Maryville that have been allocated, they're, it's because of that extra little bit of money that their doors are still open. The other thing I'm hearing a lot from, and my district happens to be the highest in COVID out there, so zip code areas, is the testing. A lot of people with no questions asked, you just pull up there and you get tested and you get a result within 15 to 20 minutes, and that's really important. So you know, the 2 million dollars there makes a lot of sense, and if there's anything extra from that mortgage that's not spent, that 4.3, I would like to see it go back into that community testing. But I think that those three areas are very important, and then that whole, the testimony we just heard about the farmer's market and all the individuals that are, are working locally and using local farmers and helping out individuals that are on WIC, that's a great program, so that 5K is very smart, spend it also there. So those are just my comments, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So is, hopefully Chris is still up there. So, Chris, you and I talked, I think, yesterday about a gentleman who was having some concerns with regards to our business assistance, and he wasn't a part of the, the 87K, but I think we could help him. So I guess my, my question is, is if we set aside some money besides the 87K to help some of these smaller businesses, could we do it?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, yes, we do have applications in the queue that are ready to approve, and as we looked at the gentleman who had talked to you and wasn't eligible, I believe he was short on the original pass-through of applications by a month in, in when we had originally called our time, that we said the business had to be in business by January of 2019, and he missed that by a month or two. And then when council generously modified our program over the summer, that made the applications that we received and went forward with, more applications eligible that we already had in the queue, and those applications are still in the queue and would be eligible for funding.
Okay, thank you. So I, I mean, I, Councilwoman Pastor, I like where you're going, but I still would like to set a little money aside to help some of these small businesses that first applied but didn't qualify until we went back in and amended that a couple months ago. So, again, I really think it's important we help with utility assistance and rent, but again, we have a lot of small business people who are proud and they want to keep their businesses afloat. They don't want to have to turn around and ask us for utility assistance. So if there's some way we could compromise and put some money into the small business assistance besides the 87K, I would be very happy. Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go first to Councilwoman Pastor to respond to Councilwoman Stark, and then we'll go to Councilmember Garcia.
Let me do my numbers and I'll respond right back. Hang on.
I will first go to Councilmember Garcia and then Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, and, and I think directly to that, I think at this point, we, we should be looking at impact, and yes, we could add a little bit more to business assistance, but I don't, I still don't see it being enough to actually make a significant impact. It feels like a drop in the bucket, and I do feel like we've been able to, you know, we have the IDA happening, we, there've been some federal programs, some state programs. I really want to urge, you know, my colleagues to, with this last batch of money, to try to get it directly to the people and go in, in that direction. I know it's really hard and it's a weird situation to be here in the, with the last, you know, 8 million dollars, but I really want to make, make that argument. And, and you know, those employees, like you said, Councilman Noakowski, those employees of those, those places, I don't know how many we're gonna be able to impact with this amount of money, but I do know that we'll be able to impact people's lives directly and quickly more with programs that get money directly to them. The other thing about these business applications that we've seen, and we've tried to make them as easy as possible, they still take some time and they still go through a process. And, and I strongly believe and know that either with this administration or the next, we're gonna get another batch of, of, of funds that will be able to get more to those businesses. But, yeah, that's, I guess, my, my last argument to, to do that, to be able to help as many people as possible directly. But I, you know, I was the second to the motion, if we want to figure out, you know, 1 million to the businesses, if that's enough to you, Councilwoman Stark, I'd be okay with it. I don't know if that's the number or what other number Councilwoman Pastor was thinking you made the motion.
Mayor, if I can respond, I, I appreciate.
I had recognized Councilwoman Pastor next, but is it okay if I go to Councilwoman Stark? Councilwoman Pastor? All right, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I want to thank Councilman Garcia. Again, I, I've had a couple constituents, they're very proud, they want to keep their businesses, they don't want to turn to say, now I need utility assistance. And they had filled out the applications and they did not meet some of the criteria, but again, a couple months ago, we went in and revised that, and I think they would definitely be qualified now. And so I do want to have some money to help, and I'm not, I know I can't be the only district that's having that situation. So if there's some way we could put some additional money in there, I would really like to do that because I, again, especially talking to my constituent on Monday, he's very proud. He's proud of his business, but he's suffering. And I know he wants to keep afloat, and, and I know he would qualify now, so if there's some way that the councilwoman could see some additional funding, I would really like to see that. Thank you so much.
So I'm willing to do the 1 million.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor.
I'm willing to do the 1 million in the motion because I do feel a compromise should go, 3.3 should go to, directly to our residents and constituents, and also a million should go to small businesses assistance. What I would say is that maybe the small businesses assistance needs to look, relook at the criteria as to those most in need and prioritize it that way.
Okay, so I think we have a revised motion. Do, does anyone need anyone to read the motion? Or we are ready to vote? Yeah, can we just, yeah, one more time?
I'd like to hear it again, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, me too.
Okay, let me see if I got it right, my numbers right. 3.3 million to wildfire, 2 million for Project Assist, 1 million and 87K to small business assistance, 2 million to additional testing, and 500K towards food relief.
Wonderful. So with a motion from Councilwoman Pastor, the second Councilwoman Garcia is supportive of the revised motion. Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my, my vote. I'm gonna be voting yes, and I just really like to thank our staff, you know, Chris Mackey for going back there. We have a lot of Spanish-speaking mom pop businesses, they actually translated everything into Spanish, and our staff, Fentecita, Uber, and Tanya were out there knocking on doors and explaining how to register and be a part of this program. So thank you so much, Chris and your staff, for doing that outreach and, and making sure that the Spanish-speaking businesses were able to participate, and I'm a yes.
Pastor?
Yes, thank you to my colleagues.
Stark?
Yes, and I just want to say thank you to all the council. This is the way we should operate and compromise. I really appreciate everything the council has done today. Thank you.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Caiggo?
Yes.
That says 9-0.
The Phoenix City Council has unanimously completed our allocation of CARES Act dollars to help our community fight COVID-19. An exciting day, we have come together with a very ambitious plan, and it's wonderful news that it passed unanimously. Thank you to Jeff and the entire team who put in the hard work producing this plan. It really has been a point of pride as communities across the country.
point of pride as communities across the country have looked to us and our implementation for advice and guidance. And um, thank you to our amazing partners who now have to go out and implement this plan with a few weeks to go, but we hope we can make it a better holiday season for folks who have had a very hard year. So a huge amount of work went into this plan, and we don't have time to celebrate it right now, but I just want to express my gratitude, as have the members of the council. So thank you all for this great unanimous vote. That concludes the policy portion of today's meeting. We will adjourn the policy session and reconvene in formal. Uh, because we have convened a new meeting, we will have a new roll call. So I will turn it to our clerk to call the roll for the formal meeting of December eighteen, uh, December eighth, twenty twenty. Councilman DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski. Councilwoman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Williams. Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
And Mayor, item number four is to allow the labor unions to provide comments to the city council on proposed changes to memorandum of understanding. The public will be given an opportunity to make comments on the union proposals at the December sixteenth, twenty twenty city council meeting. Wonderful, thank you. So we are following our ordinance around labor negotiations, which begins with this presentation today. Um, city manager, do you have any introductory comments before we go to the presentation, or should we go straight to the presentation?
Mayor, thank you very much. As you mentioned, this is following the city's ordinance for meet and confer and meet and discuss, in which the uh labor groups submit proposals by December first. They are then given an opportunity to speak to the council if they so choose. Uh, that happens today. And then uh by ordinance, the public is offered an opportunity to speak to what the unions have submitted and spoken to. That will happen next Wednesday, December sixteenth. And so I believe at this time, we have had one labor group that has asked to be able to address the council, and that is uh the police, uh Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. And uh I believe we have them available uh as you, as you direct, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. So we will uh turn it over to Daryl and Plea for their presentation. Daryl, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. Mayor and council, thank you for affording me the time to address you. Uh, my name is Daryl Cripplin, and I am the treasurer and chief negotiator of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, a certified bargaining agent for Unit Four employees. I'm here today to talk to you about the more than twenty-six hundred police officers and detectives whom we represent that selflessly serve the citizens of this fine city. Our police officers and detectives were tasked with an unprecedented undertaking in twenty twenty. Through November, Unit Four members have worked three hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred hours of overtime, much of which has been at the expense of their regular days off and time spent with families. Through it all, these professionals kept the city safe and provided a safe place for protesters to peacefully exercise their First Amendment rights. In addition, they professionally mitigated and addressed the protesters who were set on conflict and destruction. The protests in Phoenix did not play out in the national stage, much like Seattle or Portland. In addition, our police officers handled more than six hundred and six thousand calls for service, of which ninety-eight thousand and fifty were classified as violent in nature, which is up four point three seven percent from this time last year. With the police department, we believe, is understaffed by more than one thousand officers, your police officers handle these calls with the care and professionalism we expect. Our detectives have been tasked with case management that has never been so high. Homicides alone are up sixty-six percent January through November. Aggravated assaults are up twenty-six point four percent January through September over the previous year. In addition, our property crimes detectives have been tasked with investigating over thirty-seven thousand cases between January and September. Our proposed MOU represents what Plea feels are realistic requests, considering the revenue numbers reported by the city. Through the first four months of the fiscal year, combined general fund revenue from city and state shared sales tax reflected a growth of ten point two percent compared to the same period of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Even excluding the audit adjustment, the combined growth rate is eight percent. Some of this growth is attributed to additional retail sales tax collected from online retailers, which became effective in October of twenty nineteen. Considering the world we live in, I suspect that this will continue to increase. It is time for city officials to recognize the selfless dedication our police officers and detectives exhibit daily and as the valued employees that they are. I am asking you that you support the hardworking men and women of our unit. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have questions or comments from council members? Uh, thank you. Seeing no questions or comments from council members, uh, I will turn back to our city manager if he has any concluding comments.
Mayor, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, you'll go ahead, Councilmember Garcia. You have the floor.
Thank you. I think along with uh, with what we, what we saw, what uh Plea has put forward, and I had um mostly questions, I don't know what this format looks like, and so I guess I'll ask a broader question to, to the representative of Plea. Um, I'm mostly interested in the section, the, that's called uh Rights of Unit Members. And I've seen some shifts um that to me seem, seem uh a little bit of, of trying to shift the, the process of investigation, or what I would phrase as evading accountability or transparency. And so I'm wondering, after a year like the one we've had and the last couple of years and the things that have happened since your last contract agreement, what is the impetus for some of these, you know, you know, in part, you're, you're requesting for even more time um video or things before an investigation. Um, there's other shifts that you're making in, in, in this portion, you know, things like asking the, for the chief not to be allowed to, to transfer folks. Um, you know, like, I know we're not going section by section, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking through it. Um, you know, you're, you're requesting to uh erase or, or clean someone's record um after three years. Um, you know, I, I could go on, but I just, I just kind of want to hear a little bit from you of why, why you feel this is needed um to make these shifts um in what some of us already consider a lack of accountability towards, towards the police department.
Well, thank you for the question. So the changes to the section one four um are mostly cleanup items, but also to allow the MOU to emulate state law through the Peace Officer Bill of Rights. Um, it more, more uh, what we presented more follows uh the guideline of, of the Peace Officer Bill of Rights.
Does the Peace Officer Bill of Rights have anything about the chief not being able to make transfers?
No, that does not.
Okay.
And we're not against the chief making transfers. We just want to have some collaboration um on what the best needs of the department might be.
Yeah, I mean, to me, there's, there's some shifts that don't equate to just aligning to that. Um, there's a place where, you know, you, you want to start getting, for example, the discipline piece, where currently it, it goes with notice of, of intent of investigating something um when it makes more sense where it's notice of finding or, or once an investigation is concluded. So I, I think we're gonna, these conversations are gonna happen between you and city management. I, again, I don't think that's, that's the situation. I actually think that the Bill of Rights were, existed during the last contract, and so I could be wrong, Ed. Um, but just, yeah, those are the things that came to mind, and, and we'll, we'll watch it and, and we'll hear from the community in a couple of weeks. So thank you.
You're welcome. And just for reference, the uh last MOU was actually a little bit more restrictive than the Peace Officer Bill of Rights outlines. So we're just trying to be more in, more in line with that.
Any additional council member questions?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I don't, I don't necessarily have any questions. I just want to make sure that this whole process is transparent and fair. Um, and uh knowing that the city manager and staff will look at all the uh, the Bill of Rights and uh the peace officers uh, um, language and, and to then, I expect that then the staff would then come back and just uh show us, uh, this is what's in the Bill of Rights, this is what in the peace officer um language. And uh then, then from there, we will, we can understand, because my book is highlighted and uh want to, want to be able then to uh continue those uh dialogue and discussions. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions from council members, um, we'll, I guess, turn it back to our city manager if you have any concluding comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first of all, I do want to thank the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. They did strictly follow the letter of the ordinance and uh met all the deadlines and did uh present uh their proposal, which uh is, is helpful to us as we begin negotiations. We will continue to have discussions with the council about the city's position, and then negotiations will begin formally uh the beginning of January as called forth in the ordinance. As you mentioned, and as others mentioned, the public will have an opportunity to address uh the, the comments by the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association next Wednesday on the formal agenda. That agenda is uh begins at two thirty, and the item will be posted on Thursday night on the city's website as part of the December sixteenth agenda, and that um will be available to the public. So thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, thank you, Daryl, for the presentation. I guess, from my perspective, there are a huge number of state and federal laws that apply to our employees, and I don't know that we can reflect all of them in the MOU, but we will go forward and, and see what we can come up with as the process continues. Thank you for being willing to present to the council. With that, the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council on December eighth is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.